States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to point out, members, the council members present tonight will be Ms. Greifey, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Lamos, and Mr. Davies. Bill will be absent, and of course, we're not down one anyway, so. Next item there, the approval of the agenda. We have one, one thing, one change we want to take for that, and that's on the consent agenda towards the end. There's four items there. We're going to do the first three items together, and then we're going to do the fourth one, the approving the alcohol license for American Eagle separate. As we get to that. Make sense? Okay. All right, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the general agenda as posted and sent to the news media 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Mr. Palmer has a motion, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, we have the leadership statement. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Next item is the council membership workshop we had on March 10th on Monday. I'm not going to read that for you, but it is available online if anybody would like to review that. Which brings us to our public comment section. So was there any public comment this morning, this evening? It's still on morning to me. Not hearing any, we will move on. First, the next item is the public hearing. We have none of those, old business. We don't keep that around, so we don't have any of that. Next item is new business. This is acknowledging resignation of the Ward Three Councilman Kevin Blanford and consider intent for filling the Ward Three vacancy. Mr. Dent?
Yes, so Ward Three is vacant, and tonight, the council will decide on their intent to, what steps to take to fulfill the vacancy, whether it's by appointment or special election. And the consensus at the workshop was to fill the vacancy by appointment through accepting So we talked about accepting applications using, I think, let me get the schedule right The intent is to start taking applications tomorrow morning and take them through next week, and they would be due at 4:00 p.m. on the 21st, Friday at 4:00 p.m. And then on March 24th, Monday, at the workshop, the candidates would be interviewed, and then schedule the appointment to be at the March 27th council meeting.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Dent. So as Ron mentioned, we did kind of come to a consensus to fill the vacancies by appointment. So at that point, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to fill the Ward Three vacancy by appointment, expecting, accepting applications through March 21st at 4:00 p.m.
So moved.
And most by Ms. Greifey.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Davies. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, Mayor, I do.
Yes.
What I would like to see, if we have, in the past, I think we've had a table sitting up here and people down there, if we could have it where that camera could be activated to show the people on YouTube, the people that are talking, and that would be good.
Yeah, we'll do that.
So we have a note, a motion, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move forward with that. Next item is the approval of claims, and I would entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted by staff in the amount of $163,102.63.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Palmer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, we have the ordinances and resolutions. We have none of those this evening. This evening, I got it right at that time. And so that will move to our consent agenda. And as I mentioned, the first three items, we will go first, and that is approved previous minutes from Thursday, February 26th, 27th, 2025, regular session. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, March 27th, at 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers, and approve alcohol license for IV Hampton Dollar Fresh at 808 Fourth Street Southeast Hampton. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Next, the last item there that we separated out, this is approving the alcoholism, alcohol licensing renewal for American Eagle, 104300 LLC, that was as crossroads at 4th Street Southeast in Hampton. Mr. Morrison, did you have some information on that, please?
Yeah, it's going to be my recommendation to you guys to deny the alcohol licensing to American Eagle 4300 LLC, doing business as crossroads for 4th Street Southeast in Hampton. And I have a few items listed as to why. I went over the past year of some of the instances and dealings that we've had with them over the past year. So on March 12th, 2025, the Hampton Police Department received a complaint from the Iowa Division of Alcohol Beverages reporting crossroads, is selling alcohol on an expired license. Crossroads liquor license expired on March 3rd, 2025, and they were canceled on March 4th, 2025, for failure to renew. On March 12th, 2025, a plainclothes officer went into the establishment and purchased a 12-pack of Coors Light. Charges are pending on that, and ABD was advised of the violation. On February 13th, 2025, the Hampton Police Department did a routine compliance check on all liquor licensed establishments in Hampton. Crossroads American Eagle 4300 LLC failed and sold to an underage person. Employee was charged for providing alcohol beverage to an employee, to a minor. ABD was advised of the violation. On January 10th, 2025, I went to Crossroads American Eagle 4300 LLC and spoke with an employee working, who put me on the phone with the owner. I spoke with them about the new glass pipe law that is currently in effect. They were told they need a permit to sell glass pipes. Glass pipes cannot be displayed where persons under 21 could see, and they need to collect a device exercise tax. They were told these steps needed to be taken immediately. On March 12th, 2025, I went to the establishment, and they're still selling glass pipes without a permit and still displaying where someone under 21 could see. I did report this to the state. On March 24th, 2024, we became aware of the Crossroads American Eagle 4300 was allowing people to play the fish game and get paid 75% or 2/3 of its in-store credit won on a game for cash at the counter. On March 24th, 2024, an investigation was conducted, and an individual received $14 voucher for credit from the machine. The individual was paid $9 cash from the clerk. The Iowa Department of Suspections and Appeals and Licensing was advised, and administrative action was taken. On March 24th, 2024, we had an individual enter the store and purchase pre-rolled blunt for $3.25. They are allowed to sell some THC products, but not pre-rolled items. At this time, their registration was expired as of October 18th, 2023. Health and Human Services Cannabis Compliance sent cease and desist letter, and for those violations of the consumable hemp program, failure to register inhalables. On March 13th, so today, I spoke with Iowa Department of Human Services Cannabis Compliance, and they still have not currently registered for consumable hemp products. On March 13th, today, I spoke with ABD, and they advise they have no permit to sell glass pipes. It is also noted that in 2023, they failed alcohol compliance, and in 2020, they failed tobacco compliance. So for those reasons, I am requesting denial.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So you're going, I tried to follow, were you going backwards in time on some of this? Because you went from 25 to 24.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you have your dates mixed up, or if it was all just chronological backwards.
Well, at the end, I went to 2025 just to show that currently, they don't have any current permit to sell cannabis or glass pipes, but otherwise, I started with more recently.
Okay.
And worked my way down.
All right.
And then came back to.
Okay.
So can they have the merchandise on the shelf, or?
For the alcohol?
Yeah.
Yes, they can have alcohol out, they can't sell it.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So we fail to approve this, then what do you do as far as like notification of them?
Yep, I will notify them. I've already notified them that the intent was for, I was not going to recommend the renewal. There is a process they can go through to appeal it to the state, which I would imagine they probably will, and then it'll get worked out through there.
So, but they can't sell it until then, or because if it's on appeal?
They don't have a.
Yeah, because they don't have it right now, but they've been selling it.
Right.
Okay.
They've had no license since the second, or the third, sorry.
All right. Any other questions? All right, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny, please state, the consent agenda for approving the alcohol licensing renewal for American Eagle 4300 LLC, Crossroads, 4x4, 4th Street Southeast Hampton, Iowa.
I would make the motion to deny.
Motion by Ms. Greifey.
I'll second.
To deny, second by Mr. Davies. And we put that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's been denied. That brings us to our staff official reports. Chief Morrison, come on back up.
Yeah, we had our second tonight of Police Citizens Academy yesterday. Our speakers were Franklin County Attorney Andrea Miller. She did Surgeon Caesar, and we had Captain Halsey who OWI on traffic stops, and Officer Kelly did Taser last night. So we had a good showing, a good time last night, and we're looking forward to going to Iowa Falls next Wednesday to the college for shooting training, so. Officers continue to work on nuisance enforcement. I won't update any more of that, other than I'm told that the compo site opens April 1st, 2025, to let people know. No burning is, reminder, no burning is allowed, and the citywide cleanup is coming up, and I think Doug's going to give a little update on that. And the Coonley Building did get cleaned up, so that was a plus. As far as employment, we're continuing that search. We do have a test date of April 5th, 2025. We have six applicants that we intend on having there. I have reached out to two more, hoping to get that to eight, but as of right now, six are testing on April 5th. And then we took a tour of Lantern Park Apartments today and the progress there, and I think Doug will update you on that, if there's any questions.
Any questions for Chief Morrison? Mr. Palmer?
It was interesting to hear, you know, Andrea Miller's kind of flipped the script on things, and now she's the county attorney, so it's interesting to hear things as when she was magistrate, now she's county attorney, kind of how she understands both sides now. So that was a real good program last night.
Ms. Lamos, anything?
No comment.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Apologies for not being here on Monday evening, cold season. Anyway, got quite a bit here. Down at Progress Park, we had a bank of lights at the Little League Field that has broke off at the base of one of the telephone poles that was holding a bank of lights out of left field that has broken off. We got the, A&amp;M Electric went and unhooked things for us, make sure that's a safe area. I think it snapped off due to the high winds that we had the other day. So anyway, we're working with, I'm working with A&amp;M Electric and Mid-American, spoke with them today as well, and we're going to work something out to try to get that repaired as soon as we possibly can. The hard part's going to be the fixtures, the fixtures that are there, predated and going to be hard, so we just might have to replace with something newer and better. Musco lights at the soccer pitch down at Progress Park, those are operational, and then there was some lights that were out, and apparently, I spoke to Mid-American today, they were actually down there and got things fixed today. They actually updated a couple of the lights, and they advised me that they don't know if it was a squirrel or some animal that caused a big problem. So anyway, they got that resolved, and hopefully, things will be working out. Cemetery tree removal projects winding down, they're getting close. They got, you know, they're working on a little bit of a mess there, of course, but it always looks worse before it gets better. Stump grinding and right-of-way contracted tree removals, that's nearing completion. I think they have maybe three trees left and just a handful of stumps, maybe. I know they're out working this week on that. City staff's also still working on trees, but we're dancing around a lot of other things, too. We've had quite a few main breaks and a few other odds and ends here, but we also pulled away, we had a manhole that was really sunk and a real hazard, actually, and the guys broke into that yesterday a little bit, and were able to get some things repaired and fix that on 4th Avenue Northwest in the 10 block. And like I said, we'd had, we've had quite a few main breaks here in recent weeks. It's not really uncommon, given the weather. We've had a lot of hot and cold, a lot of earth moving and different things of that nature, and it's just one of those things we have to deal with. I just ask for people, for the patches that are in the streets, be patient. We can't get concrete right now, we can't get asphalt right now, so it'll be a few weeks, but hopefully, by the end of April, we'll have some things sorted out. We'll be meeting with the chamber staff next Tuesday to discuss the citywide cleanup. We are considering April 25th, 26th, 28th, 30th, May 2nd, May 3rd, for the dates for the citywide cleanup again. Seemed to work really well in the past couple of years. We've done that with two weekends, and then, of course, one middle of the week, and it worked out really good, and we want, I think, continue that and keep moving forward. That's always a sought-after event for our community members, so I think that'll be good. The new burn site pad project keeps rolling along. They're moving rock out there today and starting to get that pad put in place a little bit. The water treatment plant project, that's still rolling along. We took delivery of the new street sweeper today, so new-to-us sweeper, and we appreciate that a lot. Very nice machine. I will bring it up for you guys to see, hopefully, at one of the next meetings, so, nice piece of equipment. We have a few sign repairs. Winter always throws at us, you know, accidents, or snow removal accidents, or traffic accidents, and they take signs down here, there, what have you, but I know the guys have been working on a couple of those here and there. And we know, we have some potholes, and we, that need attention, and we know we need some alley maintenance. We just need people, as we say every spring, please just be a little patient with us, we're going to get to it. We have a garage demo also. We hope to get that accomplished next week sometime. I believe the last date was March 1st for their deadline on that one over in the Southwest, so we just got to get some dumpsters ordered up and get some staff time to get down there and get rid of that. Skate park pad project, that to get started in the near future as well. 321 5th Street Southwest, the asbestos testing will be done next Wednesday. We anticipate a report the following week. Once we get that report, we'll put RFPs out for the actual abatement and removal of it, and then we'll go from there as far as the demolition side of things. Tour the Lantern Park Apartments today. Got a call yesterday from one of the gentlemen that owns Axis, asking if he wanted me to come up and take a look at some things, and I've stopped up as their project's been going along anyway, but he wanted me to see a couple of those, and Ron and Chief Morrison and I got to be up there a little bit and take a look at what's going on up there, and I think people will be amazed. They're gutting those apartments and new flooring, new appliances, new cabinets, new windows throughout, new doors throughout. They will be doing the roof, I believe, here. I think the contractor said mid-April was for the roofing and then the gutters, so, and soft fascia work, so it's really transforming into a really, really nice rentals, so I can't wait till that gets finished, but at some point, we'll get some pictures of before and after up here on the screen for you guys to take a look at. Compo site staffing interviews, I believe, are coming up, and I still would encourage anybody that would like to work part-time seasonal for mowing and trimming to also come in and fill out applications. We'll be advertising for that soon. We're just wanting to get the advertisements for compo site done first, since we need that staff first. So anyway, other than that, we got a lot of irons in the fire, so questions or concerns.
Can you repeat those potential dates for cleanup, citywide cleanup?
Yep, I sure can. Let's see here.
25, 26, 28, and 30 for April.
There we go.
And May 2nd and 3rd.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
25th and 26th, 28th and 30th of April, and May 2nd and May 3rd. Is that right?
Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. Lamos?
Just out of curiosity, the company that does our water main leak detection?
Yes.
Would it be more, in the long run, if we bought one of those machines and did it ourselves, or what's the process for that?
Right. So basically, if we bought the equipment, you're looking at tens of thousands. It's really expensive. We typically spend, I think, right now, approximately $5,000 a year when we do our citywide, and then we also hire them when we run into issues where we're just not sure where it's at. And we had kind of a weird past month or so where we've had some leaks, but we couldn't get them pinpointed, and instead of tearing up a whole lot of road, we called them in to try to help. It's not 100% accurate always, and we utilize more than one company. We'll use Weststrom, and then there's a couple other companies that we'll try to use as well. Some have better equipment than others, some specialize better than others. You know, I've thought about that over the years. I know larger cities have their own equipment, but it is very expensive to maintain, and then you know how those software updates are, and different things of that nature, but it's basically listening devices where they listen on hydrants and valves and different things of that nature, and then they correlate sections of pipe. And plastics harder to leak detect than ducted iron or cast iron, some of our older stuff, or even copper for that matter, but I know we got some big bills from them here recently, and I didn't like it either, but you know, I think we really needed that. I think in the long run, it saves us from bigger patches and more problems. As far as, do I recommend getting the equipment or not? I can get some prices someday, and we can talk about it at a workshop, maybe.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Has somebody say that, well, they're hauling those trees from the cemetery, and there's debris all over.
Oh.
But, you know, those guys from Arbor Monkeys?
That's not the cemetery crew, but Arbor Monkeys are doing right now the stumps in the right-of-way trees.
Because I know the Arbor Monkeys clean everything up, so if they could just double-check behind them.
Sure, absolutely.
Would there ever be a chance that we would have 8th Avenue Northeast paved? I mean, every year, I get complaints that there's so many potholes and just.
Right. So if you remember right, we chip sealed that, and of course, chip seal's not the end-all end, but we did chip seal that a few years ago. And basically, what had transpired was, is we, that was the year, if you remember, when we had the great debacle with all the frost boils. The county got socked, we got hit a little bit on our secondary-type roads that are gravel. You know, I think that's entirely up to city council as to what we do with those roads, but a garbage truck drove through that one and caused a great amount of damage right after it was chip sealed, within a year, actually. And that's kind of the big problem. There was a garbage truck causing us a lot of headaches, and we haven't been able to really recover from that. And then we've struggled to get other chip seal applications to try to build that up in years past, but I'm still trying to beat that bush a little bit. Barry Hope gave me some names, and I tried to get some people here for that, but we are in a very weird location geographically from those companies, and unless you're going to do 50,000, 40,000, great big projects, they're not going to come here.
Well, I said I'd pass it along.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, something we can always think about, you know, when we start planning what we're going to do, but we'll get it doctored up this year as best we can.
Good, all right, appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Tar? Not hearing any. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dent?
An update on the pharmacy project. Terricon is working on drafting the plans and specs for asbestos removal. Once those are complete, then they'll use those to push out to potential contractors who are interested in the asbestos removal. They'll look at the plans and specs, and then you'll also tour the buildings to see if it's something they want to submit a bid on for asbestos removal. So that's, Terricon is working on those. Once that's all complete, then we'll go into the bid letting process for asbestos removal on that. And then just to reiterate what the chief said about no burning, this time of year, people get tempted to burn yard waste, and it's not allowed, and everybody just, you know, have patience, and our compo site will be open hopefully April 1st, or depending on the weather. Any questions?
Mr. Palmer?
I do appreciate, Ron went to bat on looking up some of the garbage issues that we're having, and talked to Bill at the landfill, and anyway, got everything all cleared up in my eyes, so I really appreciate that. That was a lot of, just little legwork stuff, just not a big project, but just a little legwork, so I really appreciate that.
All right. Mr. Lamos?
Are we going to have the same pool manager, and when will they be doing interviews or applications?
Yeah, same manager, and she has communicated with Doug this week and indicated that she's starting the process of putting together posters and advertisements for lifeguards and talking with students. That's where most of them come from. Yep. So she's thinking, thinking about it.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Not hearing it. Thank you, sir. We want a council reports. We'll start over here with Ms. Greifey.
Well, the weather's getting nicer, and people are out and about, and that's great for business. We're through.
We're through this slump. We always hit this huge slump after Christmas time. Last Sunday, I went to Iowa Falls for a tea that was put on by a shop down there, and it was really, really delightful. The cool thing is, is they're not very happy with Iowa Falls, and they're looking to relocate, so I'm really, really pushing hard to get them up here. I'm hoping that I can get them to come the last weekend of March to my shop. They do gourmet cupcakes and gourmet chocolates, and I just think that would be an awesome business here in town. Been working every Tuesday night on putting together the appreciation event for the chamber. It's coming along beautifully. We're really excited about it. I think it's going to be a lot of fun this year. I hope to see our council members there in support of Mark and also our beautiful library. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Nothing really, just happy with, with the class last night and learned some stuff. You know, everybody complains about, well, why don't we just kick the door in? We know there's drugs in there, just kick the door in and get all the drugs. Well, we were talked to last night, that just doesn't really happen that way, and what you may see on cops or on lie PD or some things like that, just doesn't just happen like that. So anyway, I appreciated our county attorney, Miller, talking to us last night, and overall class was very, very well, and I appreciate all the work done in the cemetery. That's, that's a big project, some still more to go, but we're, we're getting it, so that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lamos?
No comment tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Davies?
I attended Main Street Iowa Conference last Tuesday and Wednesday in Jefferson, and one of the sessions was very informative on different funding and grants that are available, so we hopefully, we can maybe write for some of those grants and bring that money to Hampton. Attended an Iowa Tourism Conference yesterday in Des Moines. Again, many good topics that I'm going to be able to share with the tourism board that we have to increase the people that we can promote or to and have them come visit our county. Jerry mentioned the Chamber Appreciation Banquet, that's next Saturday. We do have a Chamber Quarterly Coffee that was rescheduled for Friday, March twenty-first, so we have the quarterly coffee on that Friday, and then the Chamber Event on Saturday. And then also, prior to the Chamber Event, Franklin County Arts Council Scholarship Concert will be held that afternoon at Faith Baptist Church. And then finally, St. Patrick's Fish Fry. We normally have gone every week in Lent, but we do not have one this Friday. We're going every other week, so just for those fish eaters, the next one is Friday, March twenty-first. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. For mine, I've just got a couple items. I want to reiterate what Doug said about the Laner Park Apartments up there. If you haven't driven by there and take a look at them, I mean, that is like night and day, what they've done with that place, and I really, really hope that this, this beautifies it, gets good, good tenants in there, take care of the, take care of the place, and we have some more housing for, for people that need the apartments, because it's going to be a really nice, really nice facility. And the only other thing I have is the Progress, Progress Park. I like, I like to drive out in the spring. Two years, two years ago, I went by there one, one evening, and it was still light out, and there was like six kids out there with snow shovels, shoveling the basketball court. So I know they're anxious to get out there and use it. Luckily, we don't have any, we're in winter weather right now, so, you know, they're using it. Doug got the lights fixed over there. Shout out for Kelsey to work with the soccer help pitch people. I don't know that that's been lit since we put it in there, but I tell you what, I went by there last night, and there was two guys in there playing, two kids playing, and it looks really good when it's lit up. So, and I know we fixed some other, some other lights there, so it's going to look good, it's going to, it's going to be a place for kids to hang out and do, do good things, and I'm really, really excited about that. That's all I got tonight, and with that, I'd entertain a promotion, not a promotion, a motion to adjourn this regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Most of my mission, my motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
I know what you mean, Steve. The weather, the minute that weather gets nice.